Okay, we'll go ahead and call the regular city council meeting for Monday, July 15th. We'll call that to order. And then afterwards, we'll go into closed session after the city attorney takes it in closed session. We'll come back out here recess and then go into special meeting. Okay? So, roll call.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Okay. City Attorney.
The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss the item listed as 2A on your regular meeting agenda.
This regular meeting, we're going to call to order the special meeting. Do we have to actually call that to order, Wendy? Okay, so a call to order the special meeting for the city council meeting for Monday, the 15th. Do we need roll call as well? Roll call, please.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Okay, if you can take us back into closed.
Thank you. The city council will now adjourn to the closed session to discuss agenda item 3A as listed on your special meeting agenda.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and come out of, wait, special, we're going to adjourn our, well, we're going to come out of special meeting. If you can take us out of closed session and then we'll adjourn that, correct? So, city attorney.
Thank you. The city council has reconvened with closed session. The city council voted unanimously to appoint Les Johnson to serve as the interim city manager for a period of three months effective August 16th. The city council also formed an ad hoc committee consisting of councilmember Hasselbrink, councilmember Chirco, who will work on processing the solicitation or retention of a full-time city manager.
Thank you. And so, we'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting. And as we pick up, we've already went through roll call for the regular meeting, so we're going to reopen the regular meeting. And before we do the pledge, I want to introduce staff. So, we have here Wendy Quintinart, city clerk, Michael Dowd, our city attorney, Brett, our city manager for another month. And then, if you can introduce your staff, please, sir.
Captain Chris Carr, here. Les Johnson, Development Services Director. We have Eric Hendrickson, Finance Director. Ron Noda, Recreation Manager. Emlyn Noda, Recreation Manager. Chelsea Wilson, Executive Assistant Benefits Coordinator. And Ron Roberts, our Fire Chief. And Captain Carr, if you can mention and name and recognize the officers that are here tonight.
All right, tonight, we have some of our new officers that we'll be introducing to the public. Michael Conno, David Relbrook, and Nelson Ramirez, as well as Veronica Wilson, Detective Delana Lopez, Corporal Sean Krogman, Sergeant Brent Malatesta, Sergeant Paul Barbieri, Officer Augustine Delgado, and Record Specialist Manny McDowell.
Great. Thank you all for being here. So, on the agenda next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Murphy, and then the invocation by councilmember Gross. If you can remain standing for the invocation, please.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything, justice, for all.
If you please bow your head and join me in prayer to the higher being that you normally pray to. Father, we ask your blessings tonight on our city council, that we make decisions based in the best interest of our entire community. We ask also for the same blessings for our city staff, for our outgoing city manager, our incoming interim city manager. We ask your same blessing for all of those first responders who protect us on a daily basis in our police and fire department. We also ask that you watch over the men and women of our military who are defending our freedom throughout this country. We ask your further blessing on the citizens of our community, that they live in a quality of life environment in our community, and that we do the right things for them. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Counsel, if you can join me up front, we have some presentations. Okay. Okay, so, we have presentations to introduce our newly appointed police officers, Michael Conno, Nelson Ramirez, and David Relbrook. Could you all come forward, please? We have some certificates for you, and want to thank you for serving.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Please, and then photo op. Good to see you again. Come on over here, and then let's line up for photo. We got... You don't have to, so...
Thanks for having us here.
Yeah, okay, thank you all. And thank you for being here, too, to the rest of the men and women in blue. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And then, I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Hasselbrink, who also sits up the OCFA board.
I could have Chief Roberts come on up. So, the month of July is wildfire awareness and prevention, and what we have been told is we no longer have a fire season, we have a fire year. And this year is going to be projected to be worse than it was last year. Don't let all the rains fool you, all the greenery fool you. Everything underneath that has been dead for years. And we're at OCFA, we're making every attempt for fire prevention and suppression this year to gear up for this season. So, I'll let Chief Roberts recap a little bit, if you'd like.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and residents. Appreciate the proclamation tonight. It just goes to show the partnership that we have with the city and with the community of Los Alamos. So, we're very thankful for that. And just a reminder, you know, one of the philosophies that we practice a lot in wildfire awareness is have an emergency plan for your family. And with the ground shaking like it did over the last two weeks, I'm hopeful that you all have taken an opportunity to do that. So, thank you.
And last, we have a presentation for Jessica Ridgway regarding her nonprofit, the African Sisterhood. Please come on up here. And then, after, we can say a few words, but I want to just pass this to you. Come on up here. Yeah, really. Come on up here. We're going to get a group picture, and then she's going to talk.
Anywhere, wherever you want to.
Can you tell us a little bit about your organization?
Yeah.
Do you want them up here, or do you want them seated?
Whatever you guys want.
We're going to sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Your question.
Hi, I'm Jessie. I would first like to thank the, our mayor, the council members, and the city staff. I'm Jessie. I am the founder of African Sisterhood, which is a nonprofit. And what I do is when girls are on their menstrual cycle, they can't go to school. And when they can't go to school, they're eligible for marriage at age 12. So, they get, they either get married to older men that are like 60, or they get traded for cows, or like anything like that. So, what I did, I recently just got back last week from Africa. I went to Kenya, and we gave 300 kits to 300 girls, which inside of a kit is five reusable pads that are, they're like flannel material, so they last four to five years. And it's a washcloth, two zip locks, and two pairs of underwear, and it's all inside of a drawstring bag. And my plan is to go, we're going back next year, and to do 300 more kits, because it was like the perfect amount of weight, the perfect time, the perfect, like everything. And, I don't know.
How can we help you? Is there, you have a website?
Yeah, my website, I actually have cards, if you guys want them. Our website is www.african-sisterhood.org. And then, we have an Instagram. And then, David is amazing. He's helping me do a documentary. And it was supposed to be next month, but I'm going to Arizona for college, so time is crazy. But, that's going to be soon, also. But, is there any more questions?
And how do you raise your money? Do you do fundraisers, or do you...
Yes, we do fundraisers. All of this summer, this time around, all of our washcloths, underwear, and backpacks were all donated. So, and then, we have a whole bunch of sewers. We actually called it a sew-a-thon. We had one that we made like 1,000, so it was crazy. And then, we have just more volunteers, and we did a fundraiser at McDonald's, we did a couple more fundraisers, and yeah, it's just crazy how many people want to help.
Great. Well, thank you very much for what you're doing, and thank you for presenting here in front of the council and the public.
Thank you.
Good luck with you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six. We have oral communication. So, at this time, any member of the public may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Are there any speakers today?
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public, oh, we'll go ahead and close public comment? No, no speakers? And we'll go on to council announcements. Did anybody want to go first? I know we kind of pick on the left side. How about over here, Dean? Would you mind going first?
Sure. All right, I've been involved since the last council meeting in a number of pretty interesting type events. I attended on June the 20th, the City Leader Advisory Panel on behalf of the city with Assembly Member Tyler Deep. The following day, on the 21st, I participated as a judge for the Builders for Babies program at Anaheim Stadium, where more than 1 million boxes of diapers were used to build themed type homes as part of the Orange County Builders Association. There was one other group, and I can't recall what that, what that name was, but I think Parks and Recreation participated as well. And there were 11 different creative homes to participate in, or to judge. On the 22nd, I participated in the Serve Los Allo event at Grateful Heart Shelter. 23rd, I was a victim of a mass casualty training exercise involving the fire and police departments, learning to merge together in those types of circumstances. On June the 25th, I conducted the Regional Military Affairs Committee meeting over Joint Forces Training Base, where Captain Mitchell Vaughn spoke from the sixth of the 52nd U.S. Army Reserve Aviation Unit there at the base. We learned a lot about what their role is there at the Joint Forces Training Base. On the 26th, I attended a lunch seminar from the Association of California Cities in Orange County on the changing of cultural and the new norms after the Me Too movement. Very informative. June the 27th, I attended the Summer Elected Officials Reception at the Irvine Ranch Water District. Again, that was sponsored by Association of California Cities of Orange County. On the 29th of June, I attended the Music and Movies Event, Star Wars theme, over at the baseball field at Joint Forces Training Base, that's now called Starbase Field. On July the 4th, I was invited to ride in the Suburbia Estates Independence Parade, again representing the council and the city. Later, I joined all my colleagues over for the fireworks spectacular at the base. A great show, and delighted that we were able to pull it all together this year with fewer participants and sponsors, but the same large number of fireworks. On July 6th, I was installed on the Executive Board of the Sons of the American Legion, Post 176 here in Los Alamos. Then, last week, on the 11th of July, I was invited to a reception on behalf of the Association of United States Arm, United States Army, to recognize our newest Medal of Honor winner, Staff Sergeant David G. Bilavia. There's only 71 folks that have actually received the Medal of Honor in the military services, and many of those are not with us anymore. So, this was quite an honor and quite a privilege. He was awarded the nation's highest military honor for his bravery for actions on November the 10th, 2004, in Fallujah, Iraq, leading his platoon in clearing 12 buildings. They got through nine of them without a problem, and they got to the 10th building, and they were met by insurgent fire, heavy insurgent fire, where they had to back out, reorganize, and go back in. And Sergeant Bilavia was credited with literally wiping out the enemy in this two-story building and saving his trapped men. Just an unusual individual. He's no longer in the army. He's now making a hero's tour across the country. And so honored just to be able to meet him and hear his story. There is a YouTube out. If you search the YouTube channel for Medal of Honor winners, he should come up, because he's the most recent one that was done. Just an amazing young man. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Richard?
I don't quite have as much. The, I was there for the 4th of July at the base. You know, I want to congratulate the mayor. We don't thank our sponsors enough, and I was happy to see you took time to mention each sponsor by name, because without them, we really wouldn't be able to do a lot of what we do. Was able to attend the Chamber Breakfast, where both Ron and Emlyn gave excellent presentations promoting the city as they normally do. And then, again, want to thank Randy Hill for, I attended the Movie in the Park on Saturday night. Randy's a sponsor. He's also a traffic commissioner. But, the Movie in the Park was very well organized. Got to see Ron again. I got, everything I went to, I saw you this time, so it was all park stuff. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So, I'll go next. I also had a chance to meet the Medal of Honor recipient, Staff Sergeant David Bilavia. It was over here at Joint Forces Training Base, right next to the Fiddlers in the Green in the auditorium over there, and it was sponsored by AUSA, and small intimate gathering. And the guy is such a motivational speaker, and he is unapologetic about what they do, what they do for our country, what this nation is, and what he's asking us to do in terms of parents with kids, that, you know, we're sending them off to defend us. And so, I, you know, no more noble cause than that. I attended the Change of Command Ceremony over here on the, for the 40th Infantry Division. I'm going to let Councilmember Hasselbrink talk a little bit more about that. She was there as well. I also, let's see, what else did we do? The Serve Los Allo, I was able to help to kick off that event, and thank you, staff, for allowing me to participate. Senator, State Senator Tom Bubner was there, and he got to see some of the stuff that we're doing, which is really good. And then, city manager, we get to your report. If you can have Emlyn talk about the medical checkups that were going on. I'd like to have that, make sure that's out there in the community. So, next year, when we have that, we can really advertise that as something that's been offered by volunteers. And then, the other thing that is coming up, we have St. Isidore, it's coming up on the 20th, their 20th Jubilee. Los Alamos Day at the county fair is on the 25th. I am planning to be there for the flag raising ceremony, and if you can make it, that'd be great. That, I think that is basically it, and I'm going to pass it over to you.
Okay. Starting with Serve Los Allo, once again, it was amazing. It's our second one, and it looks like we've been doing it for about 15 years, so congratulations to staff. They just did awesome. I loved it this year that we were able to start serving some of our residents. I know last year, we concentrated mainly on the nonprofits as a kind of our inaugural. And this year, we were able to reach out and help some, some very grateful residents. I know Councilmember Chirco and I, and Les, were over at Royal Oak washing windows. I don't even wash my own windows, but I did over there. We had a great time, and just the sense of gratitude was just amazing. I mean, these people can't, we could barely reach the windows. And then, we walked around to every unit and gave them a plant, and they wanted to know what they could give us, what they could bake us, I mean, just everything. It was, it was pretty awesome. So, I'm glad to see that's now launched and just continue to grow every year. I was at the 40th Infantry Change of Command with General Laura Jaeger. She is, we were in the news, very much so. The first female to ever take command of an infantry division in the U.S. Army. She was born and raised in Fountain Valley. Her father was a former airfield commander at the base, and she did her first ROTC at JFJB. So, she was basically coming back home. Very down-to-earth. I look forward to working with her, and I think she's just going to do wonders for the 40th Infantry. Went to two movies in the park. The first one at LAYB at the Sunburst Field. It's the first time that we've done this, and in hearing back from LAYB, and I know the people there kind of well, it went very positive. It was a nice change of venue, good parking, indoor plumbing, and bathrooms, and the snack shack was open. And I hope we can continue to do that. It was, they're in between seasons, and so it was a nice venue to have that at. And then, this Saturday, went to Orville Lewis Park and saw Ralph Rex: The Internet, and that was a lot of fun. Once again, a neighborhood park, a lot of people were walking there, a lot of families and stuff, so it's just, it's a great thing to be able to do during the summer months. Wanted to thank staff for doing this pop-up dog park. That's been one of my passions for a long time. And right now, for the month of July, it's over at Laurel Park. They have it fenced off. They have a small dog area and a large dog area, and I've heard nothing but amazing things, and hoping that they can make it permanent, so hint, hint, make that happen. But, yeah, it's just, people are just loving it, so I'm looking forward to seeing that happen again in the future. OCFA, we had a press conference on Tuesday, and Chief Roberts, please help me if I miss something, but we received a grant from Southern California Edison for $4 million. We have now purchased one of those Australian supertankers. We are the first in the United States to have this. It's OCFA's property. It also comes with a, let me get this right, what's the name of it? A Type 2 intelligence gathering helicopter, which will fly with the supertanker and kind of find the hotspots and make best decisions on where to hit the fires. This is mainly going to be used at night, because that's the best time to fight fires, is at night, when the humidity is down, the winds are down, or humidity is up, winds are down, and fires are easily to see. So, we're really excited about that. Right now, it's going to be stationed over at Fullerton Airport, but we're working on maybe getting it over here at the base. But, this is, this is a really, really big deal, and will help with this upcoming fire season. And then, also, last month, Brett, with the Traffic Commission, the joint meeting, I know we had talked about after their meetings, to provide us a recap summary of what you do at the Planning Commission, so I'd like to make sure that that's going to happen, because I think they've had a meeting since then, and those are just very useful. And then, I also thought, and I must not have, but I wanted to put on the agenda the discussion item, to be able to start televising the Traffic Commission meetings. I think it was going to cost about $180 a meeting, and since we're becoming less dependent on the written minutes, I think that would be good just for memorializing things, and also being able to understand some of their decisions and some of the interactive conversation. So, when we see the decisions and the feedback and everything, we can understand where that's coming from. So, if we could get that on a future agenda, that would be great. And that's all I've got.
So, I'll try not to be too repetitive, because my colleagues have talked about a lot of the events that we had here in the past month, but I do want to just give a general thanks to Ron and Emlyn and their team, because from my perspective, the summer is the most, it's the best time of the year in Los Alamos, not just because the weather's better, but because we have so many community events. You know, we had Serve Los Allo, which is relatively new, but really a chance for the community to all get together to help people out. It's really wonderful. Although, I got to register a complaint. Councilmember Hasselbrink was spraying my kids with a glass cleaner this year, so I didn't think that that was a good idea. So, thank you for that. You know, we had the 4th of July at the base. That was incredible as well, even though other local cities weren't participating as much. I know you all did a fantastic job with that. The Movie in the Park, I attended the one in Orville Lewis on Saturday, and that was a great job. Again, as always, there were food booths and John Pauls', a band, a good movie. So, thank you for that. Thank you to Randy Hill, who sponsored that event. And I'll just run through the other events real quick as well. We had a Change of Command at the base. I attended that as well. That was really neat to see the first female infantry leader in U.S. history there, and I attended with Councilmember Gross and City Manager Plumley, a meeting with Congressman Lowenthal. He agreed to continue to support the city and the base, and to look for additional funding sources for both the base and some of our community events. So, I think it's a really good, it was a good meeting and a good idea to interface with him and other local elected officials to just make sure they're thinking about us and seeing whether they can help us out as, at all. The Highlands Neighborhood had a parade. They have a parade every year, and I was honored to be the emcee for the neighborhood parade on behalf of the city council. They usually have a different, much better emcee, but he was unavailable this year, so I was happy to fill in. And I know other neighborhoods in the city have parades and events as well, which is just great. And lastly, City Manager Plumley, I, I know it's public information that you are leaving the city and for a good opportunity, and while we're mad at you for doing that, I just want to give my thanks for all that you've done for the city, for the great relationship that we've had, always answering my questions as a new council member, and, you know, you're the only city manager I've known, so I can say that you're the best city manager I've worked with.
That's the only thing.
Yeah. So, again, I believe you always had the best interests of the city at heart, and that you really care about city staff, so just want to say you'll be missed.
Thank you. And then, if I may, just if you'll indulge me, I did forget to acknowledge the 4th of July. So, my neighborhood had the parade, and I got to be the grand marshal. And then, on the 4th of July celebration, Mayor Pro Tem Murphy said I got to announce all the sponsors, but staff is the one that put together the script, so thank you for doing that, to have, you know, give me something to read, and acknowledge, again, the sponsors that are so valuable. And again, thank you, Ron and Emlyn and your staff for putting together the, all logistics and everything. You just, I know that Tom Lassner was just, couldn't say enough positive things about how you're able to do this without the other partners being involved. So, again, thank you for doing all that. Okay, back to you on item number eight, items from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want to also thank Emlyn and Ron and your team, and for Serve Los Allo on 4th of July, and all the great movies and music in the park, and all the things that you've been doing? Just fantastic job. And Emlyn, why don't you give a brief update on the medical checkup that were provided at the Serve Los Allo?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the city council. We had a great showing for our health expo, provided by LestonicFreeClinic.org, which is a resource to the community. So, there are other clinics out there, but we hold ours annually every June, and we actually doubled the number of residents and members of the community that we served. This year, we served about 87. And this is free dental fillings, dental extractions, acupuncture, medical services. People without insurance, they don't have to show any proof of income levels, so it's a great resource to the community. We also have the Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Expo, which was outdoors. We had about 25 vendor booths. They were doing free blood pressure screenings, and we had all different kinds of local vendors that were able to help the community find resources. So, thank you very much for participating.
And then, Councilmember Chirco touched on it, but yes, I am retiring with the city of Los Alamos after six years almost, and just want to thank the city council and the community and the staff, the fantastic executive team and staff that we have, and all of you guys, for all the things that we've accomplished over six years. It's been a lot of, really a lot of fun. I'm really proud of what we've done together and how we've moved the city forward. So, I will miss everyone a great deal. I'll miss this place and this community, but thank you.
Thanks, Brett. Okay, now, item number nine, warrants. Can we have a motion for the warrants?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Next, on item 10, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon in one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Does anybody want to pull anything?
I'll pull B.
B is pulled. B is pulled. Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion for the balance?
So moved.
Second.
Murphy, Hasselbrink, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Okay. B, did you need a staff report, Mark?
Yes, let's start with the staff report. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is an item that has been brought back to the council based on previous direction from the council to resent, rescind an approval of a memorandum of understanding for the North Orange County Service Planning Area and the homeless outreach efforts. So if this item is approved tonight, then we, as a city, will be not a part of the memorandum of understanding with the North Orange County SPA cities, which are 13 cities in North Orange County. And I can go into more details if you'd like. Anything else? Or open it up for discussion?
Sure. So the North Orange County Service Planning Area, you said there's 13 cities?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and is it correct, all the cities are participating in the MOU except for potentially us?
That's to the best of my knowledge. I mean, as an update today, I understand that there may be a couple more cities going back to look at all the numbers as they've been revised a number of different times. But that is my understanding, that we're the, we're the ones that are out. The other exception is City of Anaheim, because they have their own settlement agreement. So they're separate.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'll pass it along for questions. I've got some comments I can make after everyone asks their questions, perhaps.
Anybody else have questions?
I have any questions, but I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we uphold and not rescind the City Council approval of the memorandum of understanding for the North Orange County Service Planning Area, subject to the following limitations. Number one, that Los Alamos' contribution for construction costs is capped at $19,102. Number two, that the Los Alamos' contribution to operating costs in the first full year of the shelter operation is capped at $25,357. And third, the increases to Los Alamos' operating cost contributions be capped at 2% annually. This essentially mirrors what some of the other cities have done. And I've talked to Cypress, which we were led to believe was not participating. And they, in fact, have given direction to participate. Essentially, this, if they will allow us to do it, and the city attorney can talk about this, this will allow us to continue, hopefully, as part of the memorandum of understanding with the North County SPA.
I'll second it for discussion, though.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And any discussion?
Yeah, just, Dean, I just had a quick question on your, the cap of the $23,200? Because it looks like it's $19,200 for construction, then $4,000 for annual operations. So can we cap it at the $4,000 annual? Split those out instead of just, because I think your motion was $23,200 for operations.
The, actually, the latest information that we had received, that we had taken back to the council the last time, is the number that he's referring to. So the dollar amount that was the latest report on the operating cost was the 25.
Then why isn't the staff report, does it say $4,000?
That's what it was. It increased from $4,000 to 20, the $25,000.
Right, but this is a staff report dated July 15.
It says further down that the costs have increased exponentially.
I'm still confused about, in, in the staff report for July 15, that says annual operations of $4,000. So do we have different information that's not in the staff report?
I think I may be able to clarify on this, but if you wanna jump in. The staff report was drafted, moving forward with the recommendation of rescission, and those numbers are referencing the initial numbers that were considered by council. After these numbers were published, we subsequently learned that those figures were increasing significantly, and that was the potential basis for this rescission action. The numbers that Dean are reading now actually reflect what the current projections are. So the $4,000 amount, I believe, was what we initially thought annual operational costs would be. And then when we came back, most recently, that number had gone up to the $25,000 mark.
And that couldn't make it in the staff report, just as an updated?
We, that information, to my understanding, in terms of the new projected costs, well...
I'm just trying to understand what we're passing, because what I see is $4,000.
Yeah, the motion, the motion on the table, as I understand it, would be to uphold the prior approval, subject to these limitations, whereas the staff report's recommendation is postured as rescinding that prior approval.
Okay, so what's the current operation, annual operation?
The latest operational cost of 20, the $25,000 that Dean referred to, $25,357 is the very latest.
So it went from, it went from $4,000 to $25,000 annually?
Yes.
Okay.
We were told that, I think, at the last...
Right, I just, I'm not sure why it just wasn't in as an update type thing. So I, I just wanna make sure I understand what we're passing. And then the construction of $19,200, is that stayed the same?
It's $19,102.
Okay, and the staff report, it says $19,200. Like I said, I just wanna understand the numbers.
Yeah, the latest number, $19,102.
So it went down $98.
And what this will do is cap us...
No, I understand what it does. I wanna understand that, what I'm reading here, I wanna understand that I understand what the current numbers are. So we go up from $4,000 annually to $25,000 annually for operations. And for construction, we go down $88.
Yeah, the construction costs at this point haven't changed very much at all. The, what, the main impact was on the operational costs, and that went up mainly attributable to $1.12 million in additional operational costs from one of the two shelters. So that was the big hit, about six or sevenfold on the operational costs, with the construction costs remaining roughly where they originally were.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, if I may. So I love Councilmember Gross's idea to cap, cap the expenses. But I guess my question is, will that be effective? We can try to put whatever limitations we want on it, but I guess my question is, have other cities capped their approvals? And can we do that? I mean, what's the likelihood that, that that gets accepted?
It would be, you'd have to kind of guess at the probability that it would get accepted. I think it will be well-received. There are a couple of other cities that have proposed comparably capping it, based on the very latest cost that we had received. And in talking to a few managers that are in the North Orange County SPA, I think they'd be happy to have Los Al in the mix, because, and even if it's capped. It's not a guarantee. They don't have to accept it. The, they, if they don't accept it, then we're not in. But I think if we're doing it, and there's two other cities that are doing it, then the rest of the North Orange County cities benefit by that, because there's at least some contribution from those cities, which is zero.
Right.
The other part to, to bring up, and it's not in Councilmember Gross's motion, but if the council does approve this, we would need an appropriation of about $40,000. We originally had budgeted the four.
We originally budgeted for $4,000 for the annual contribution, but due to the capital, upfront capital costs falling into this next fiscal year, and the increase in the operating costs, we would need a, a budget amendment approved by council of $41,000 to pay for this.
So that could either be a part of, could be a second motion or a part of a modified motion, but we would need the appropriation if the council moves forward with that.
Did you say if we don't approve this?
If you, if you...
Approve the motion.
Approve the motion as stated.
Okay.
So again, clarification, so it's, it's the $19,102 plus, how much is it annual?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, three fifty-seven.
My understanding, I spoke, I was approached by Beth Swift from Buena Park on Saturday, and she questioned why we had decided not to participate. And I explained it was because of the unknown in terms of how many cities were involved. She clarified that, as one of the cities building the, the shelters, that all of the cities have moved in that direction. I did reach out earlier this morning to Cypress, because that was one that you had indicated was definitely not interested in doing it, and apparently...
I, I did not. I did not.
No, I did.
Okay. I have, no, I have, I had no knowledge what Cypress was and wasn't doing, so don't attribute that to me.
I'm sorry, I thought, no, no.
Okay, all right.
I think it was Shelley that mentioned that.
Thank you.
If not, I apologize. But I reached out to Cypress, and they are moving forward. And they're doing the cap the same way. So I think, I'm the one that switched the vote the last time, because I felt we were going down a, a black hole. And I think, based on putting the caps in, number one, everybody's in but us, as I understand it now. So the motion here is to reapply and try to get in, but put caps on it in that particular process, which means if, if something else occurs, this is what our limitations are that we're gonna do. And I believe there is part of the state's new budget funding for cities to participate in this, where it won't affect the, the general fund.
There definitely is an effort to get state funding, yes.
Yes. So if we vote not to rescind Dean's motion, what happens to the lawsuit? Catholic boys?
Catholic workers.
Workers.
That actually is not agendized for discussion tonight, so we can't go too far into that. I, I understand there is somewhat of a interrelation between the MOU and potential resolution of that lawsuit. So if, if that's something council would like to get into, I'd ask that we, we try to schedule a closed session discussion of that at a future meeting day.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Couple of quick clarifications, and I've been a stickler for words on this the whole time. We are not the only city that is not in this formally, correct? We're the only city that has, has something on their agenda to rescind. But not every city has approved to be in this, such as Cypress. They're putting in a cap, but that has not been approved, correct?
There's two, there are two, the way I understand it, there's two cities that have proposed comparable to what Councilmember Gross has proposed, putting in a cap. But that's not been approved as part of the...
Right. But we're, but we are not the only city that's not in this right now, formally.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, I believe...
Cypress has not approved and gotten in on this. They, they haven't. I, I'm talking about formally public.
Yeah, so if I may, just a clarification. So when you said, hasn't been accepted, accepted by the...
By the North Orange County SPA as a whole.
Has it been approved by that, that, that body, the council for that city? So I mean, two, two different things of, two different levels of approval, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
They've, they've talked about it, but it has not been approved by their council.
And nor has it been accepted, since it hasn't been approved.
The way I understand it, it's the direction of their council.
Right, I'm, I'm gonna be a stickler, because to say that we're the only ones not in this is not a true statement, right?
And I said, that's, yeah, I mean, it, and it could change, because...
Right, no, I understand it could change.
It's an ongoing target, and cities, once they receive these additional costs, the managers are taking it back to their councils.
Right, but I understand, but we...
Verbally, it, it looks like and sounds like, but without 100% knowledge of that, that all of the cities are in, except for Anaheim, and us, right now.
Right, but, but for the past three months, we have been told we are the only city not in, and that's not a true statement.
No, I, I, we've not, I've not said we're not the only city. I said it's an ongoing target that has been moving.
Well, right here, it says we're the only city not in.
That's what we think right now. We think that right now.
Okay. And the other thing is with the, the construction, the $19,000, is that a one-time, or is that every year?
That is a one-time.
It is one-time, or is one-time this year, and the next year, they're gonna come and say, we need more construction money? Is that spelled out in the MOU? It's one-time, or is it $19,000 for the first fiscal year?
The way it's worded in the MOU, it's a one-time, as it is right now.
And we make sure it says one-time and not one-time annually, or one-time fiscal year, or, because, you know, if, if Buena Park does theirs, and they expand, and there's more construction cost, who's gonna absorb that? I just wanna make sure that when we agree to this, we know exactly what we're agreeing to, and there's no bait and switch, because we didn't understand what we were saying.
Yeah, and the other one is ongoing.
Right, I understand the operations, but the construction thing, I just don't want that to be ongoing, because they can't get construction done in a fiscal year.
If I, if I modify the motion to say Los Alamos' one-time contribution to construction costs is capped at $19,102, would that...
Perfect.
Address what you're looking for?
Yep.
And I'll make that, I'll make that amendment to the motion. If you, as a second, accept it.
Yep.
With the budget amendment included in there?
Does the budget amendment have to be done now, or can it be done next month, once this works itself?
It would be cleaner if you did it now, altogether. Then you have it in one package. You have it funded, you have the direction from the council, you have the direction to give staff to go back to the North Orange County SPA to try to negotiate capping it on our behalf.
Okay, so then I'll make a second, or do I start over?
A second amendment?
A second amendment, to also include allocation of not to exceed $40,000, I think was the number you asked.
Forty-one thousand, Eric?
Currently, the budget has $4,000, so an additional 41 brings us to 45 total, is what's needed.
Okay. To include an additional $41,000 in the budget. And I'm gonna put in that caveat that we make certain we apply for state funding to offset that amount.
Without any guarantee of getting it, trying to get whatever is out there.
We make an effort to get the four, the money from the state.
I'll second that one.
Shelley's already seconded.
Yep, I'll accept the second. Or I'll accept the amendment.
So, sorry. So I think, so I think we've got the amendment. So, City Attorney, can you read the, the motion, as been amended twice?
Yes, the motion, the motion would be to uphold and not rescind City Council's prior, prior approval of the North Service Planning Area MOU, subject to three limitations. The first being that a one-time construction expenses be capped at $19,102. Second would be that the annual operation costs for the first fiscal year would be capped at $25,357. And the third limitation would be annual increases thereafter would be capped at an annual increase of 2%. And then on top of that motion, there's, there's a request that an additional $41,000, or an expenditure of an additional $41,000 be allocated to this effort.
And then do we need to also give direction to the city manager to reach back to the group and present this?
Yeah, if I could add that, and a direction to staff to coordinate with the other north SPA cities in effort to amend the MOU within these limitations.
Make sure the motion, good with that?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Yep.
Okay. I think it's clear to everybody. And then I guess one, one piece of clarification, the annual contribution of $25,357 with a 2% escalation per year, that's a 10-year agreement, right?
Correct.
Okay, just, just, it wasn't talked, I mean, we talked about that, what the expectation is. So, so we have the motion, it's clear, and it's been amended. Any other questions, discussion?
The question I have would be regarding the settlement agreement, and whether you wanna have a future closed session item related to that, to potentially talk about getting back into that.
But that's not germane to this, right? I mean...
No, that would, that's not, this is, it's a standard.
Yeah, so let's do with this, then we can kinda go to that part. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, so any other discussion? Let's do a roll call vote on this one, please.
Roll call, Mayor Kusamoto.
No.
Mayor Protem Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Gross.
Yes.
Councilmember Chirco.
Yes.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Yes.
Thank you all. Appreciate the, the hard work on this one. And then, if, if we can, I guess, as, as City Manager said, agendize for the next meeting. Do we need, is there a time sensitivity to, on that one?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. To, on the settlement, on the settlement agreement, okay. Thank you all, appreciate that. Okay, next, we have, yes?
I just, just wanna say, if you're watching this and you're trying to figure this out, this is a very, very tough decision that we've gone back and forth on. In a, anything with the homeless is, is, is tough. Your choices are limited, and it's a moving target, as Brett has said. And we're, I think our vote today is an attempt to bring up, bring us up to date to what the facts are now. And they've changed since we voted last. That's what's going on. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Okay, on to discussion items. We have 11A, the Association of Defense Communities, the Fourth Annual California Defense Leadership Summit. It's taking place in Sacramento on the 13th and 14th of August. I don't know, do, I guess, staff report real quick, if there's a, a brief one?
Thank you, Mayor. So as you mentioned, this is the Fourth Annual California Defense Leadership Summit, taking place in Sacramento. This item allows council to discuss the benefits of participating in the summit and to designate a council member to attend. Approximate conference fees and associated travel expenses is around $1,500.
Okay. Any questions over here?
I have an interest in attending. I attended the first one on behalf of the city. The second one, I attended on my own. I did not attend last year, and I would like to attend the one this year.
Okay.
Could somebody explain to me the purpose of going to this?
I'd be happy to. So... So, last year I attended, but not on behalf of the city. My employer sent me, and what it is, it is a group of communities that band together to advocate for, basically, is defense spending in our state, in this instance, as well as our local communities. And I'll point out, Travis Air Force Base has three counties surrounding it, and they form a coalition to go out there and make sure that the base stays viable, because it's an economic engine. So for us, I think, with the relationship we have with our base, this is one of those things that will help strengthen it, because as we have the opportunities to lobby for dollars that we need here, for infrastructure, for the benefits that we need, as well as the economic engine, that's the opportunity to go and talk with influencers in Sacramento. So with that, I will move this for approval, and if so approved, then we can talk about who to go. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second? Is there any further discussion on this? Mark?
No.
Okay, can we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay, 4-1, Murphy dissenting, thank you, Richard. And as far as sending somebody, I would like to suggest that councilmember Gross goes. Is there any objection to that?
No.
I am interested, to some extent, to be able to go, but I know with cost and everything, I did go to the National One in DC. If budget allows, I would be interested, registration's $100, and I'd be interested in just going up for the day on a Wednesday to save on the hotel cost.
Okay.
So it'd be simply just a flight, just to kind of continue on what happened at the national level, but I'm, as long as we're represented, I'm fine either way.
Yeah, and then, I think, Wendy, I guess if you looked at the registration, there is a $300 registration that allows more people to attend, a group, I think up to five, for the one price. So if, and I'm looking at Brett, if there's interest in the community that may want to go up there, can we look at doing that, stretching a little bit for the, instead of $100 registration per attendee, if we get a $300 registration, we can invite members of the community, and we might even extend that to members of the base, at least as far as their...
Registration.
Registration, but there, of course, their expenses are their own, so. If it's okay with the council, can we provide that latitude to the city clerk? Do we need a motion on that one, Michael?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll move that we provide up to $300 if we can justify additional attendees.
And approve, and approve, just, sorry, and approve councilmember Hasselbrink's potential attendance?
Okay, so I'll take the amendment, so up to $300 for attendees at a community level, and then councilmember Hasselbrink, if she's able to get up there on her own, just to be able to attend. That's my motion.
Second.
Chirco, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you, Richard, consistent.
Well, I can't believe we're spending money on this in the first place, so I'm not going to authorize more people to go.
Gotcha, I understand, no, no, understand, appreciate it, though. Okay, thank you all. And then, next, we have B, 11B. Back to city clerk, is that yours, Wendy?
So this item is designation of a voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. It's being held in the Long Beach Convention Center this year, October 16th to the 18th. The voting delegate takes part in the annual business meeting on Friday, and, see, Mayor Kusamoto, councilmember Gross, and councilmember Hasselbrink have expressed an interest in attending this conference. Since it is local, then it would only be the cost of the conference. There's no cost associated with designating a voting delegate. Associated conference fees and travel expenses are approximately 750 per traveler.
Okay, and so we just need to vote on the delegate, is that the voting delegate?
Yes.
So, any discussion? Is there a motion for this?
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, Gross, Chirco?
I'm sorry, who's?
Oh, who's going to be?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I guess we need to identify the voting delegate, so make her the motion. Do you have a delegate you want to identify?
I would like to attend, yes.
You want to be the voting delegate? I'd be happy if you want to be the voting delegate. So I'd like to, for the record, show Dean Gross volunteers to be the voting delegate. And then, alternatives, could you make the rest of us alternatives?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, the rest of you is alternative.
Alternatives, okay.
Yeah, that way anybody can go.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0, thank you. Next, we have C.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This item is, it addresses modifications, proposed modifications to the salary schedule for executive management and nonrepresented employees. This group consists of 10 employees, including the Development Services Director, Police Chief, two captains, of which one of the positions is vacant, two recreation managers, Finance Director, Executive Assistant, Benefits Coordinator, City Clerk, and Recreation Supervisor. The city manager is not included in this group. The terms, proposed terms of the agreement would be a three-year term from July 1st, 2018, through June 30, 2021, with a net of salary increases of 4%. This is being modeled after what was negotiated with the Teamsters Association. There would be a 1.5% increase effective January 6, 2019, a 1.25% increase effective January 7, 2019, and a 1.25% increase effective July 5, 2020. Additionally, there would be one-time annual non-perceval payments to each one in the group of $1,200 each. Total cost fiscal impact, $93,562. And with that, I will recommend staff approval of this item.
All right, thank you. Back here to the council, questions, discussion? Is there a motion?
So I'll move.
Murphy?
Second.
Chirco, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, next, we'll have item D, the General Plan Amendment, the Resolution of Intention for the Zoning and Subdivision Codes Update.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It'll be the Development Services Director, Les Johnson, give the staff report.
Honorable councilmembers, this, the effort of updating the city zoning code, a comprehensive update, began back in early 2018, and that effort has been fairly involved with a number of meetings since then, with the primary objective of ensuring that our zoning code is consistent with our general plan, which was updated in 2015. You may recall there were stakeholders' meetings conducted, there was an advisory committee formed, I believe there were five meetings or six meetings of the advisory committee, three planning commission study sessions, and the draft zoning code was then furnished to the planning commission on June 26th of this year, and there was a public hearing conducted at that time. And the commission has made a recommendation to city council, however, there's a caveat associated with that, in that the zoning code update, in order for that to come forward, requires two general, or three amendments of sections of the general plan. And so what we're bringing forward to you tonight, for your consideration in advance of the zoning code in its entirety coming, is these three amendments, and for your direction to be able to move forward with those. And there are three amendments, the first one involves clarifying that the professional office land use designation allows retail and service commercial uses, in addition to the office uses that are currently identified in the general plan, that there would be the elimination of the limited industrial land use designation, and that would be absorbed into the planned industrial land use designations, a very small pocket, kind of northeast of Old Town East, behind the new hotel off of Serpentine and Reagan, and that general area. And then the third item has to do with amending the multifamily land use designation, which is our highest density land use designation, from 30 units per acre, which is currently in our general plan, to 25 units per acre. And this has to do with a criteria in our current zoning code. It identifies 30 units to the acre in the zoning code as it's written right now, but there's a provision that ties a square footage per unit, which brings that down, actually, to 25 units per acre. And the commission discussed that at length, and has made the recommendation just to reduce that in its entirety to 25 units per acre, and not maintain the 30 units. So the process that would need to be undertaken to do these three amendments takes about 60 days to complete. That staff is recommending that our consultant team, MIG, that's been helping us through this zoning code update, that they conduct that work for us, and they're very familiar, obviously have been hand-in-hand with staff going through this, they're very familiar with exactly what needs to be done, and they've identified that the work would be at a cost not to exceed $12,500 to do that work, that there are sufficient funds currently in our general plan update account that we have, and that would take care of that unanticipated expense. And once that's completed, the amendment would then be brought back to the planning commission, and then this is where it kind of gets a little tricky, trying to explain this to you. It goes to the planning commission, and then the amendment to the general plan, the zoning code, and the zoning map would all come to you at one time in one consideration, which we think would probably be a very good package to bring to you, so you can see comprehensively all of those changes at one time. We'd anticipate that happening, probably, depending on how quickly the planning commission moves, either October or November would be before you for your consideration. So the recommendation that's for you, before you, includes a resolution to initiate that amendment process, but it also includes Amendment Number Three to the Professional Services Agreement with MIG, and authorizing the mayor to execute that amendment should you choose to move forward. And with that, that'll include my staff report, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Back here to the council, any questions of staff on this matter?
No.
Seeing none? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Hasselbrink, Murphy, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0, thank you very much. Okay, next, we'll have, is it E, the Exploration of Sister City Partnership, and city manager?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This item is brought forward at the original request of councilmember Hasselbrink to bring forward discussion on, and potential guidance related to a sister city partnership. And our Finance Director, Eric Kendrickson, has done the research on this and put the staff report together, so I'll have him, ask him to do the staff report and generate the discussion from the council at that point, and we'll look for guidance and direction from the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, last month, we received emails from the city of Pochi on South Korea. They reached out to us and were interested in becoming a sister city with Los Alamitos, based on the history of the 40th Infantry Division being stationed there during and after the Korean War. I heard that the 40th Infantry Division did a lot of good things to help rebuild the city, and they were an integral part of the community there. So I've already talked into somebody from South Korea twice, very interested in becoming a sister city, and so the staff report's in front of you. Sister Cities International was an organization founded by President Dwight D. Eisenhower back in 1956, and it's just, he envisioned a network that would champion peace and bring communities together, cities that are in different countries, to lessen conflict. And so we bring this forward to you tonight to get your direction. With sister cities, usually there's costs involved with travel, lodging, hosting, some councilmembers might have to go there, we might have to host some people from South Korea here. Right now, we do have no budget for this, so any direction given would also need to be provided with a certain, maybe an idea of how much council's willing to spend on this type of project, and maybe also create an ad hoc committee, or a few delegates from the city council to champion this cause, with city staff's help, of course. So if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Back here to council, you want to start, Shelley?
Sure, and just some background, I was approached by Michelle Steele about two years ago on this. They've been very interested, the story behind Pochi and City and the 40th Infantry is during the Korean War, the North Koreans pretty much decimated this city, and the soldiers on their own donated, I believe it was $2 a paycheck, to rebuild the high school specifically, but they also rebuilt City Hall and some other buildings. To this day, Pochi and City hasn't forgotten that, and every year at the high school graduation, there's somebody from the 40th Infantry that is there at graduation passing out diplomas. It is very much active, the gratefulness is still there, and they definitely want it to be a formal relationship. We talk all the time about strengthening our partnerships with the base. I think this is another way that we strengthen and create that tie. I know the city of Huntington Beach has two sister cities. It's a goodwill effort, but I think it speaks a lot to honoring our soldiers that did what they did back during the Korean War, and at this point, it is just exploratory, you know, some of the costs are, you know, unknown, as far as travel and delegations and things like that, but they are very, I know Mayor Park from Pochi and City has reached out to us a number of times, Colonel Leeny out of San Diego, part of the 40th, has reached out to us a number of times, we saw him at General Jaeger's change of command. And with the sister cities, 501(c)(3), there is a way to do some fundraising and things to cover some of the costs for the hosting, but right now, it's so exploratory and so new, I would just like to be able to just move this forward, so we can make some educated decisions on how we look like this in the future.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Sure, so, I think, you know, in, it's a nice, I'm glad you brought this up, councilmember Hasselbrink, and I think it's a great idea and recognition of the history, but, you know, of course, I'm concerned when I'm hearing about flights to Korea and things like that, just because I know we're in a tight budget situation, and, you know, we want to focus on things that help our residents here. So I'm okay with the concept of the sister city, I guess I would just say, before we're spending money, we probably would want to bring that back here, and I assume, yeah, I assume we were going to.
And I think that's one of the reasons, right now, we don't know what we don't know, and the only way we're going to find that out is to kind of move this forward, to truly understand how other cities pay for this. We're not the only city that is a sister city or exploring this.
Right.
So before we say yes or no, I think at least moving this forward, so we can really understand what this is about, would be useful.
Okay. So, I'm generally in favor of this one, because of the special relationship between the Joint Forces Training Base, the 40th, and the city, but I think, in terms of moving forward, I guess I'm not sure what that looks like, moving forward, right, in terms of, where do we go? Because I would not want to tie up staff time chasing after some of the stuff, so I think there's going to be a lot more work and due diligence on our part. So I think, again, did you have any ideas?
Well, I mean, you know, and I'm willing to take on the bulk of this, the research part of it, for right now, it would be contacting, you know, the Sister Cities Foundation, seeing what, financing, what other cities do. I mean, it really is just learning, and I will, I certainly don't want to burden staff with additional things, or, you know, budgetary constraints or anything else, so I'm willing to take on the research and come back and report as I learn things.
What we could do is, we could work with councilmember Hasselbrink, Eric taking the lead with staff, and then we could look at other examples, we could look at other cities and bring kind of examples of small scale to a large scale, because I've worked with sister cities before, and you can be, it can be massive, or it could be very small, and so we could bring back examples and work with you and combine our research together that, Eric, will be the lead on that.
Yeah, I'll be happy to help with anything you need.
Okay, and I think at this time, I don't, like, you have something, Richard?
Yeah, I'd be happy to help, too, but I do think we should, with the general understanding, we'll come back before the council, before we spend any money.
Absolutely, yeah, 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 yeah.
So I think, and I don't know if we need to vote on this, I think it's just guidance, and again, please go research, and hopefully we can, you know, get some, you know, good info and make decisions that aren't going to be impactful for the budget, so. Is there any other questions, any other thoughts? Thank you, thank you, Richard, thank you, Shelley, for bringing this forward. And Eric, thanks for the report.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll have 11F on sustainability, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This item was brought forward, staff put together a report based on council, actually, Mayor Pro-Tim Murphy's request for, I think, generating a discussion on fiscal sustainability, and where we are right now, and specifically displaying the charts that we've presented to the Budget Standing Committee, to the city council, to the, introduced it to the Chamber of Commerce, and then getting ready with community meetings, so kind of a snapshot in time, and that as an introduction that may generate the discussion that you want Mayor Pro-Tim Murphy to start this off?
Yes, you know, what I'm looking for is, we're going to do a lot of work based on these assumptions, and I just want to make sure that all my colleagues are in agreement that these are correct assumptions going forward. I don't want to get down the road six months and have people start saying, "Well, I really never agreed with the, with the basic assumption." And so that's why I put it here, so we could all at least come to an agreement that this is a good starting point. Who knows where it's going to lead us, but at least we know where we're starting from. going to lead us, but at least we know where we're starting from.
Okay. So what do you, what, okay, so in terms of, I guess, consensus buy-in, what are you, what are you seeking from the council then on this?
I guess a vote that says these, these numbers are representative of what we feel the situation is at this time.
So basically, this is our plan. We're going to, we're going to plan based on, on this or whatever. Okay, I think it's a very good suggestion. So we're not second guessing ourselves halfway through or whatever. But I hope we can adjust it if the conditions warrant that.
Can I ask a quick question? The work that the Budget and Finance Committee did as far as all the different ideas for the sustainability, when is that going to be published to the council with the cover sheets and everything?
I think that's one of the things. We have a Budget Standing Committee next Monday night, so we need to discuss that as, possibly put that on as an agenda item.
Okay.
Time that out.
Because my concern is we're asking our colleagues to buy into something they don't know. And it's, I think we've done all of our due diligence. I don't think we're adding any more to that. So I think it's time to publish that so they can start getting their teeth around it.
Yeah, that's a very good suggestion.
But I think to, to Mayor Protim Murphy's point, I guess that, that the fingerprints, if you will, on this, I don't think it hurts, right, to say this is what we believe it is. And so I'll look at the three of us. To you, council member Gross, any, any thoughts? Any concerns about us saying, you know, this is our baseline projection that we're going to go with until we have newer information?
I think this is what staff has provided to us based on their abilities to foresee the future. You know, the problem, the problem is, we made it very clear, I think, at the presentation that was done before the city or the community and the chamber was in twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six, we're underwater. And unless something dramatic is done between now and that time, some miracle occurs, we're going to have a major problem continuing offering services. And we need to, we need to be engaging. That was part of the original plan that was put forth, was that we were going to be doing some meetings within the community. We have a...
So if I may, so, yeah, I understand, we've kind of gone over this. So I think what Mayor Protim Murphy is looking for is that we own this as a council. It's not, we don't get to say staff brought this forward. We own this. I think that's what you're seeking, right? So the Budget Standing Committee, they stepped up and they own this. So I'm looking at the three of us. And so if we're comfortable saying, yeah, this is, this is the work of the body of the five of us, you know, that we own jointly with staff, are you good with that?
I'm good with that. I just don't see a plan.
I understand that. But this is the beginning, right? We have, we have what we have to plan to stave off or address or react to. So I don't know if we need to vote on this, Richard. I think you got, you got your, unless you want to vote? I mean, I don't know how you want to get any more formal. I'm going to be happy if...
I just don't want to get down the road and have somebody say, you know, I really, I never liked it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got you. I got you with that. So...
We're going to put in a lot of work and ask the committee to put in a lot more work. I just like the idea that we all know that this, that this is the starting, well, it's really, this is just the base.
Yep.
Where we go from here could go a thousand different ways.
So we own this as a body. Okay, we're good with that?
Agree.
Thank you. So I don't think we have anything beyond that. So thanks for bringing this forward. All right, next is twelve, is it, Wendy?
Yes.
Twelve A. And it's the first reading of ordinance number two oh one nine dash oh one, the Purchasing Ordinance Amendment. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is an item that is an introduction of an ordinance to modify, somewhat significantly modify our purchasing ordinance that is significantly outdated, bring it up to modern standards and comparison of other thresholds that are out there. And city attorney and staff have done a lot of work putting all of this information together. I'm going to ask the city attorney to do the, the staff report, because he did the bulk of the work in making the recommendations to the modification to our code, our municipal code that's incorporated into this ordinance that's before you tonight.
Thank you. Also, before you use a proposed ordinance that would modify the city's purchasing ordinance, and the most substantive changes being sought here are increases to the purchasing thresholds and contract authority, the numeric limits that are currently codified. With respect to the purchase of supplies and equipment currently, anything above fifteen thousand dollars, excuse me, fifteen thousand dollars requires city council action and approval. If adopted, the proposed ordinance would shift that number northward to twenty-five thousand dollars, meaning that the city manager would have authority to retain or, I guess, fulfill procurements for supplies and equipment up to that amount, twenty-five thousand dollars. Currently, the city manager's authority for such purchases is limited to fifteen thousand dollars. This would also move the threshold for department purchasing from one thousand five hundred dollars up to five thousand dollars. Currently, if the city manager approves a purchase, department heads who are delegated to purchase supplies and equipments are, again, limited to fifteen hundred dollars. And I think staff has had experiences in the past where they found themselves kind of apportioning purchases to stay within that limit, whereas maybe that wasn't possibly the most economical way to purchase something that perhaps should have been bought in larger quantities, and that was a concern for staff. Aside from the thresholds for supplies and equipment, the proposed ordinance would also increase the city manager's contract authority for personal, professional, and consulting services agreement from ten thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. So if, if revised, then any PSA or consultant services, services agreement over that twenty-five thousand dollar limit would need to come to city council. But below that limit, the city manager would have authority to go ahead and fulfill the procurement and retain the consultants. That number is derived, well, not only is it consistent with the limitation we're seeking for the supplies and equipment, but it's also derived from a survey that was conducted by staff to try to figure out what other cities or other jurisdictions have for their respective city managers' purchasing limits. Aside from the numeric thresholds, the proposed ordinance also includes some textual revisions to the existing language, a lot of which is intended to be cleanup language or to bring clarity to the processes that need to be followed by staff, all intended to make the process easier and more, easier to use essentially for staff as they move through the process, providing a little bit more flexibility for noticing on the city clerk's part to help move procurements further. There's some changes in terminology when, with respect to professional services agreements in particular. The existing code had language that tracked a lot of the terminology you would find for public works projects, which is not necessarily analogous to the process you would follow for other types of services and engagements. So we've made that change. An additional area that has been proposed for revision are the existing piggyback provisions of the purchasing ordinance, which allows the city to, to essentially tag on to a competitive process that's been followed by another public entity, such as the federal government, state government, other municipalities, as long as a determination is made that they had followed a similar process as to what we would require. A lot of that language is simply a cleanup paragraph, but substantively a major change that's made in that piggyback provision is, under our existing code, we're allowed to piggyback or to tag on to procurements of supplies and equipment only. But as proposed, the revisions would allow the city to actually go beyond supplies and equipment and look to professional services in addition to the supplies and equipment, and then also the telecommunication provisions that are separate and distinct in our code would be able, be subject to the piggybacking.
So on the professional services, how many times do you know that that was used in other municipalities? Do you know if it's been used? I'm going to look at Brett.
The piggybacking?
On professional services?
For professional services?
Yeah.
I know, I can't give you a definite answer to that. I know that we've come across that here.
Yeah, so let me ask, maybe, maybe an example of how we might use that, or how it could have helped us in the past.
We've had some purchases, I think, we could use with professional services. We had one in police, where we needed to piggyback.
So you'd have to go out, you'd have to go out for a quote or anything like that? You could just say...
You wouldn't have to. Yeah, we wouldn't have to. And if it's within, it's a six-month period.
There's, there is no time limitation as revised. Prior code said within the prior six months, and we've omitted that with the intention of giving more flexibility. Perhaps perf, this is drafted in an expansive sense that would allow professional services to fall within that purview if we think it's appropriate. But perhaps that's not the best example. It would naturally apply to any types of services. So something perhaps even like janitorial services, if you could find another jurisdiction who has on-call HVAC services, we would be able to say, hey, this is your hourly rate that you have proposed for Cypress. Are you willing to honor that with respect to us?
Instead of having to go through the bid, the bid, okay. Okay, that makes sense to me. All right, I was just curious as to how it might be applied. So is that the rest of your report?
That's, that's a pretty broad overview. If there's any other questions concerning the sections themselves, I'd be happy to get into it. There's so many revisions to this that that, the formatting of it is a red line essentially to help you see exactly what's being changed there. So I hope that that was beneficial in your view.
Okay. So back here to council, Mayor Protim.
Brett, how many times, at bottom of page two, we talk about moving your authority from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand. How many times in the course of a month or a year does that come into play, that something you could not have done, you could now do?
Eric, we had gone through that analysis to look at about a one-year period.
Yeah, I want to say it was six or seven contracts that fell within that threshold. So it wasn't very many, but it was enough to, you know, anything is more helpful than the ten thousand dollar threshold.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
There's so many different functions in this that are, that are included. I'm not, I'm not in favor of increasing the threshold to twenty-five thousand on the services agreement from ten to twenty-five, maybe ten to twenty. The open market stuff I understand. Being able to piggyback on other offers or other opportunities, I think that's something that we've talked about repeatedly, most recently on the police radios was one of the issues about trying to find somebody that we could piggyback with. The contract service thing is the one that bothers me the most at this particular point. I don't think it's a problem in doubling that to twenty thousand based on what they've shown for surrounding cities. More than that could certainly come back to the council, and if that creates a problem, then I would think bringing it back to us for a modification would be, would be appropriate.
Anything else?
No, that would be it.
Sure, I'll second that. I think I had written down twenty as a, as a good number, and not, you know, the idea isn't that we don't trust the city manager, although we're going to have a change in city manager soon. But, you know, I think it's no extra work for us to be involved in it. It helps to keep us updated as well as to what's going on. And so I'm okay increasing it to twenty. That sounds like a reasonable number on the contract authority.
Okay. So you can form a motion that would limit it to that?
Oh, so something like... To the mayor, if I may, and Wendy, maybe other help assist me on this. I believe the, I understand the motion to be suggesting some changes in terms of the numeric threshold, which is a, which is a material change to the ordinance as proposed. So this is a public hearing item, so we will need to reintroduce it in its modified form. So I would just ask that we continue the public hearing to a date certain so that the city clerk will not have to renotice it as a public hearing for the, when we come back for the reintroduction of the proposed ordinance.
Okay. So should we open the public hearing at all then? I didn't...
Yes, but if, I'm sorry, I just, I was hearing the motions being bandied about.
No, so I didn't realize it was a, a public hearing. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and seek...
Oh, it's not, I'm, I'm mistaken. I'm sorry. It's not a public hearing. My mistake.
But it is a substantial change to the ordinance.
So do we, we won't be required to do the noticing, but nevertheless, we will come back for a reintroduction at the next meeting.
So we don't, we just provide input, so we don't have to take any action at this
point, I think? Would that be, okay?
So we come back to August nineteenth meeting with the first reading, based on the feedback today, and the main change would be the twenty thousand.
If there's any other inputs, get it now? Okay. All right, so you have direction.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, it's okay. Thank you. And I think, is that it? City clerk? Okay, is there any other comments from the council, staff?
I would like to, again, just express appreciation to Brett for his efforts and all that he's done, you know, with the council and with the city during his time here. Good luck on the, on the next chapter. Will we be, we'd be dragging you back here for some, like plaques and stuff?
If you want to.
Do you want a, do you want a plaque?
Yeah, I mean, council, when council members leave, they get all sorts of fanfare. The city manager does frankly, a lot of work.
Oh, he'll have, he'll have something next month. He'll have something. Okay, congratulations. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting till the next one. Thank you very much. You adjourned. Thank you all.